religions.
But. Due to the republic, the righteous souls, one nation, we are God, indivisible, with everything and justice for all.
Tom, he. This is your role. So. You can. Sense.
Here.
Schmidt. You're sent here. Bishop, here's. Okay. So then we have to do an election for a chairman for two. It's not all of you, so why you would have to get immersed first ones. Chair. Thank you.
I make a motion uh that Kimberly Bishop be elected pro tem for the August thirteenth twenty twenty four meeting.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions?
Yes.
Who's this?
You're hearing. You would. Swear. She's. She's like. She. You. S. Okay. So I just do a little call. I'm for the first share.
Yes.
And. Sims.
Yes.
He was sent.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
So for the purpose of this meeting, Kimberly Bishop will be asked to be known and liked in this. Chair.
For sure.
Okay, and we have already done the call. Um as a reminder, the city of Grant provides by the Nebraska Open Meetings Act in conducting business. So a of that opens meetings is on display in a meeting room as well by the state law or your meeting ledger. Um as a reminder, the mayor and the city council reserve the right to enter into a closed session at any time during the meeting in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act, even though the closed session may not be indicated on the agenda. It's the intention of the mayor and the council to take up items on the agenda in order they are presented above. However, we do reserve the right to take up matters in a different order to accommodate the schedules of the council and me. Persons having items in the meeting. Anyone which can speak during a public comment may be limited to three minutes person with a limited to individual speaking. Per topic positions, please come to the podium, clearly state your name and address for the record and the agenda topic you wish to speak upon. In a professional manner. Uh maybe it's close order at seven. Has everybody had an opportunity to view the agenda?
Yes.
And make a quick note as well, both the mayor Schmidt and the prison. Castle President Bergman were had notified us in advance to be the people's line of caps.
We'll move to set action on the agenda for August thirteenth or twenty twenty four.
Second.
Um we have a motion by Sam, pardon me, motion by Tierney, second by Sam. Any comments, questions?
See, how you vote?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes. I vote yes. Um has everybody had an opportunity to review the prior meeting minutes?
All means except Ashon prior meeting minutes for July twenty third, twenty twenty four and await the reading.
Second.
Tierney made the motion, Sam seconded to accept the meetings as presented and wait the reading. Any questions?
Comments? During the vote, yes.
Sam? I vote yes. Communications.
All right, perfect, yeah, um. Um for I have a couple of things in standing committee, but we'll get to them in just a moment. Um. Try to keep everyone update, probably had the coolest stretch of weather we've had in August, this is odd. Barely got the seventy within the last five days, uh but Nick, that's true. Outlier being today, we creeped above that, so obviously we had some days of cool closure there, trying to keep everyone notified of that. Um. We are, a couple of upcoming meetings, um I will ta- make note that we hosted the Aeronautics Commission. Uh meeting here in Grant at the airport on the ninth, um they were very impressed with our facility and what we've done. With the dollars that they allocated to us. The paving of the road, the E W S, the the Blue Hangar rehab project that we have in the works. Um they were very impressed with the cleanliness, uh we sort of sort of went over the community. These projects that we're doing and and within the community is not here after. Areas that they're supportive, so. Uh we were super impressed with with what we're doing and how we're doing it, so all good news there. Um hey. They have a mar- marathon meeting once every quarters, it's about a seven hour meeting. It's it's a pretty long meeting. Um. We. We had the main uh memoret, new main memoret, for those of you who remember Carol Brim. Uh visit us not too long ago, um she is since retiring. So Nicole Cubic is now our rep and she came. I had already, she's a promotion from within. Uh in the P P, so I had already had some communications with her, knew who she was, so. Um she just came officially to announce herself, so we'll have her at a meeting here shortly to announce herself. She can answer a question if it's however. We had. So that was, that was good news. Um. Today we had the housing study kickoff, so uh Southwest Nebraska Community Betterment. Is doing an official housing study here, I know we allocated three thousand dollars matching funds for that. Uh not too long ago, um they are contracting with. Uh Bobby Bennett, if I grow a real pay for that. But so we we held that at Midwest with some stakeholders. It's about twelve in attendance. Um just to introduce yourself and talk about the process. And steps going forward, so good conversation, good starter on the housing study there, this housing study is specific to Grant. With one that Amy had done prior was Kings County as a whole, so. This is one of the requirements we're gonna need in order to submit the rural workforce housing fund grant. Patient. It has to be, you have to have a current. Within two years housing study in order to apply for those funds, this is one of the requirements we need to meet in order to apply for those funds. And then we held the pre-construction meeting for the subdivision today. Um we met with the contractor, had an opportunity to meet on Jamie Demmerment. Who was, who was the vice president, Van Curtin. Um we hashed out the timeline. Uh they're currently waiting on some manholes, uh but they expect those to be here. Uh September, early September, so they are looking at a September sixteenth start. In the infrastructure. Uh for the new subdivision. And he is confident that they will be able to get it done, therein done by December. Sheldon is a little less confident on the asphalt, so that'll be the last thing that happens, we do have a contingency in place if they need to. Pause the contract in order to continue the paving into next year, it will make that price. Not a big deal there as long as the water and sewer are in place. So. Great time for it. All good news there, um and then I have some other things in standing committee, so I'll get to um upcoming meetings. Uh. Uh this kind of falls under standing committee reports too, but I'm gonna do it anyways. Cemetery did not have forum uh for today's meeting. Uh President Popeffal was in attendance and continued the meeting to Monday, August nineteenth at six P M. So cemetery will meet Monday, August, sorry, nineteen, Monday, August nineteenth. At six P M. Uh and then the library board will meet tomorrow. In the library. Community room. At five fifteen P M, again, that's Wednesday, August fourteenth. Uh library board in the library community room at five fifteen P M. Uh then we are. We will hold a three board meeting at two P M. See, I thought we decided Tuesday.
No, I think we're having it on Wednesday.
Wednesday, yes, okay. Was Tuesday, we moved it to Wednesday. Pre-board at two P M on Wednesday, August twenty first. Uh that'll be kind of a long day for for some, uh that will also be our budget workshop. Uh at six P M, so city council budget workshop on the twenty first, Wednesday, the twenty first at six P M. Uh and then Thursday I will be in uh party. For me. And that will take us to our next city council meeting on the twenty seventh. So.
Thank you very much. We're in standing committee reports. And it is not here, I did not have any Tierney, well. Sam.
Yeah.
Then.
Uh yes, so the. CRA. I already talked about the cemetery, so we won't, we won't beat that dead horse right now. Um CRA met at noon on the sixth. Um and they did, they did finalize the. Price per square foot on the lots, um we have shared that with the Bishop family. Um they tabled the restrictive covenants at this time for clerical. Um. Just so they can have a clean copy to approve. Uh. Really, the the square footage, you know, the restrictive covenants were the the meat of it. Uh they also approved the closing documents for the purchase of the three oh ninety six property. Um as well as the approval and acceptance of the resolutions for hundred and twenty five thousand from the channel fund, hundred and twenty five thousand. Form. You can all develop. They formally accepted those and Jesse, all. Resolutions have been signed for that, correct?
Getting closer.
One.
One less.
One more signature. So. Um we, we are. Officially the owner of three oh ninety six. Um and we will have plans shortly with that with Amy to start a process on another interlot grant. Yes.
Okay, just. All right, uh enforcement sheriff and water reports.
Sheriff is not. Do not have a sheriff's report. Where you see, I will have.
What's new?
Any questions or comments on the reports that presented? None, Jesse, please show those as accepted. Financials, they're in process, so we'll.
Little comments.
Okay, being no public comments. And no unfinished business, we will move to new business. What's item A, discussion on the cemetery fiscal year twenty four, twenty five budget presentation.
Well, in perfect work, they would have met by fifteen and briefish, you guys would have been able to approve it at this meeting, however, it's not peace. Um so I won't answer any questions on it, I'm out of the rest of the collection to table this items as a scale.
Yes, being that they have not met, likely haven't seen it, if I guess there's any further questions, that would be a good time just to. Prevent any movement forth.
It is a balanced budget minus the uh. Spender shirt, maybe what that's, that's just in case that they're having a problem for that, only five hundred, it's just. As our capital expenditure. Twenty five hundred is our threshold, so if we had to expense something in capital. And that is foundation of the. That will.
Okay, um since it is. Uh was doesn't agenda, I know we would need a motion to table, correct?
Table until the August twenty seventh. Please.
Yes.
We'll make a motion. Table cemetery. Budget until August twenty seventh.
Second. Okay, Sam made the motion to table until August twenty seventh, the action and discussion on the cemetery twenty four, twenty five budget presentation, Tierney seconded, any questions? Thanks, and you vote?
Yes.
Guaranteed, yes. Although, yes. Actually, yes. Um action B, discussion on the grant community redevelopment authority fiscal year twenty four, twenty five. Maybe.
We can. I will get a group of motion. Recommended to see them. Uh recommended the same place. So. Um a couple of things here, we're, we're. Uh we talked about the grants and bonds we're gonna need, uh that would be a bond in the amount of uh five hundred thousand. Um. Interest or loan from the Economic Development Fund in the amount of hundred and twenty five. You're gonna look at loan from pool checking and say, hey, we only proved a hundred and twenty five, well, they, they uh. We put fifty, an extra fifty thousand in there in case they have to come back. And ask for more, and it does sound like they're more than likely going to come back and ask for that hundred and seventy five, so. Um they would like to wipe. One of the streets, the option street. Uh we're waiting on on numbers for possible for that, so. Um. And that was a recommendation from Donald Smith. Um. And then the sales, anticipate a couple of sales, maybe three, two or three sales, so it's not a trade number really. Uh I would love for that to be five, six, seven, or eight properties, but um and then definitely come as way from our two old slaves. Yeah. Oh, it's not a bar, two or four handcuffs, sorry. Um and then capital outlays or infrastructure costs, uh missing engineering, um. The, the contract labor will be for the removal of. Two forty five Lincoln Avenue. In preparation, honestly, didn't hear the law clear from Amy on the grant she wrote from that for that. Um. No other real changes in there, professional services went up to twenty five, uh we're anticipating fees from bacon. You can have quite a bit of work going into the CRA project, um.
Rest of the. Stinking and.
Stinking and engineering.
Final job.
Yes, or Dickinson's in there. Um pretty. Split, split pretty evenly between the two. Um and then the rest is is unchanged for. Very good. And if all goes according, fine, we. Budgets. Those will be nice. Replaced.
Make a count. Thank you, and any other questions about. Theory. Budget?
I'll make action on it. Um this is your twenty four, twenty five budget worksheet.
Second, CRA.
Very.
Tierney made a motion and Sam seconded that we accept the CRA. Twenty four, twenty five budget presentation as presented.
Yes, I see.
Any questions or comments? No. Uh Tierney, how do you vote? Yeah. Sam?
Yes.
And I, yes. Motion carries. Action and discussion on twenty four, twenty five budget worksheets.
All right, the next twenty two pages in your package, all all concerning the budget sheets type. Don't anticipate you guys to go through these and bone the challenges yet, I'm however relooking at the budget workshop. Um I'm open to any questions you may have right now, anything has stuck out to you? Um. Ian, try to be basically responsible and conservative as you can, or if you can't. Um. Everything you've seen in the capital outlay project, this plugged into, the capital outlay list is plugged into here. The one number that's the outlier, that's always the outlier, is the, on the general income, or sorry, the general. I have sheet is uh page twelve, is our taxes collect, we won't know that approximate number until we get twenty two auditors. Um and that will happen if we actually make the valuations, so. How sort of the outline. Number there, so um. Again, I didn't expect any major. Uh. Feedback here, I did include the franchise fee transfer comparison worksheet for you as well. I mentioned the last ten years where we transfer our funds, um and do not not franchise to anyone, so. Okay, so.
When you table that, tough out the street project, you had the intersection.
Yes.
Technically overview on a task.
Yeah.
Or a track.
I jumped the gun there, so my mistake.
Overcoating.
We'll be making a correction and talk, talk more about it today during reconstruction meeting, uh we argue for. It's next year.
It's actually with the earth.
I know.
Years.
We are, I know.
Working on the risk.
Yeah, I guess. Always be mom. It's for days.
So we're looking at all these budget thing, my big question, whether we are, at least kind of asked, but just. How close can we just send it out? Those. Are you, uh, I mean.
We won't know until we get the valuation from the county.
Gotcha.
I can't even begin technically.
Okay. I know we want to try to state and enter that.
Which is. And I have been following the rest, which are very closely, probably much to Jesse's dismay, she has not listened to it.
We're both, we're both stressed about it.
Um so we'll see what they do now, the grant, they, they did say that nothing will happen till January one. So. That's kind of this tax season.
Yeah.
So, uh.
Okay, well, in time, just. Already budgeted.
Lynn, Lynn Rex, yeah, and Lynn Rex of the league is already strongly. Like, it's been.
Yeah.
So. Let's see, we'll, we'll see if they get anything back, honest, uh we can have four days of debate on. Proposed tax plan, so one, you know, week from nine and nobody will have a resheep. For the next one. But this could all be thrown in a waste basket here in January. We may have to start from scratch. From the look forward here. And, yeah, again, I know it's a lot to digest.
Yeah.
And you've only had a weekend to do it. So if you're going through here and you have any questions, please let Jesse or I know. Uh we, we can. Open and answer whatever questions you may have, whatever the budget uh workshops, the ways we'll, we'll in detail about yourself.
With regard to like wages, uh working this call. Insurance, all of those types of costs, have you. Calculated those based on whatever, because I know that's coming up a little bit here today.
I calculated upon the uh so the sheet that's included in your. Okay, page two, the original approach, those of Meyer. Adjustments, just a little bit.
Why were the two kind of planning for?
I, I planned for a four point two five percent.
Oh.
Basically across. And that's factoring in the over five.
Except.
Back.
Yeah, it was a lot in uh.
Well, Jesse and I were in a mad dash and tried and get some auditors even.
Yeah.
In time, I was, oh, counting software, decided to take a quit on, on for a whole day, so. We, we lost the day of counting, we're just not giving this time of the year. Thankfully, twenty twenty, we're there to get us.
Them and Redman.
And Redman were able to get us up and running, so twenty twenty is already paying the other day.
All right, any specific questions? Going in the workshop that might be helpful?
Big one.
Yeah. Good, okay. Um it does say action, but that really was just.
It's just, uh yeah, I, I put, but I always put the action there in case there is something you was tasked on upon within that. Were within that.
Very good, moving on to new business, item D, review and discussion on the city and grant employee compensation for fiscal year twenty four, fourteen.
So um for your request, I did include the final wage increases for twenty three, twenty four, that's the first page. I also included the side with comparisons again, uh that's page four. Um.
So in twenty three, twenty four, we did four percent COLA. So.
Right.
No, it's comparable community average, that's what it says. My mistake, that was done the year prior, and in twenty. Two, twenty three, we did do a COLA plus comparable the average. And, but all right. Um. You know. Let's say, like, yes, they do. Okay, so um. What I did here was, on the original proposed adjustments, I tried to take in what I, what I heard you guys say. Um part of that was, do we need that minimum wage adjustment on the high, on the back end? On the high end, so if it's a sale. Do we need it on the high, so I tried to take it out where I thought we didn't need it. Um. And only keep it on the low end, so the, the, the part that needs to get adjusted in order to be in compliance.
Right.
With it, so um that did result in a decrease from where we were at on the last meeting. I brought it down to four point one three percent overall increase. Um and then I. I tried to take what I heard too, and I presented the. Um. There it is, uh I COLA only, sorry, page three. With minimum wage adjustments where necessary makes well, um but the real one I'm looking at here that you guys probably. That, that I kept on the back end or the high end, or what you want, might want to call it, is the library assistant. Um I did keep the minimum wage there only because. Their actual wage and the minimum wage are very close then. So that's really the outlier, that's where it says another adjustment necessary or where necessary. Um otherwise, it's only on the, the twelve. Twelve dollars increasing to per. Yeah.
Okay. And our COLA is factored at three percent per.
But it's the last CPI, I said two point eight, I rounded up to three. Back to the drawing. Uh then I have not many projections yet, they won't come out, it'll. Fifteenth of this month? So the end of the, so I think.
Yeah.
For the next, uh. Consumer price index for the Midwest region for this.
So.
I'll either change, one of the change, and just, thank you, Kim, sorry. I did go back to the, uh to the. To the administrators, um as far as the pub, uh public works assistants becoming a department head.
Hmm.
I got a lot better numbers, so you will see that change, I know the, the department head increased before with five dollars. Um I was able to average. For. Uh the department head adjustment on public works again.
When, when you say you went back to the administrators, what do you mean?
So I have a list serve with other city administrators. And I said, okay, this is what we're looking at doing, do you, do you have this, or, or do you have departments split up, or do you have just the main department heads? Mostly we get three communities, they, they're not three of the communities that we're comparing to in our Nebraska base, or even if they're three communities. Their size to us, they do have multiple department heads, so only three. Right. They were closer to two dollars than, than I were five dollars, I'm just figuring all of them. Other.
So their advice was, when they are moving someone from a public's works. Public Works Assistant to a department head, there is typically roughly a two dollar increase for that.
And that's what the average was from most. So there was another sort of big change that helped us in the. Overall picture.
So question, currently. The jobs to of our public works assistant does not include those activities.
Right.
We would have to either change the title or change.
Yeah, so we would do, we would do three readings of the. Or. Let me do ordinance. Uh personally, or.
Resolution.
Right. So we have to do three readings to change the public works, or the employee manual. As well as the COBRA.
So is this individual become. A foreman? Or are we changing the definition of public works assistant, so anybody who becomes the public works assistant? Takes tha- that same head role?
So that would be open to the applicant at that time, if, if we felt that that applicant could be a department head versus a, you know, the works assistant. Um so when I, when I spoke to the other communities, his advice is in there. The public works assistant and just add multi-department head in there, so if you do have to cross that bridge down the road. Let's say. That individual leaves. This individual you hire is, is not as qualified as that, and you need to put them in a public assistant role versus an apartment head role with. Uh relationship period. Uh so the term, you know, where you should be all these, so on, so. We will find which names. So we've got. We should steal it. Cobra, the authority manual. Or. Multi. Multi. Page.
No. Two job titles, one would be public works assistant, one would be, yeah, it would be a color. Assistants. Cholera. To keep it clean. Be of change.
House. It's off on Ian, where to, you know, it's foreman still, multi one. Is that what they're thinking?
Yes, yes, to keep the title, if you have public works. Multi-department head one, public works multi-department head two, and then keep public works assistant. Your public works assistant will be there, and that, that third position is our. Typically been our ref's collector. Um.
So we actually are also changing the name of foreman?
Yes.
So job duties wise. There's a difference or there is not a difference on one day one hire?
There, there is a difference, um only in the scope of each department. Um and the responsibilities within those. There, there is a difference, um, only in the scope of each department, um, and the responsibilities within those departments.
So you have, the assistant, those, is it parking wreck in the street? Or is it parking wreck in the water, I don't know.
Oh, I did.
On two different ones, so.
Copying, yeah, no, it should be parking wrecks and street. Okay, I'm sorry. And then the other one would be cemetery sewer.
Modern ways.
Modern ways. And that will list with the development strengths of those two individuals, and can, that can really modify elements.
One more time to the COBA, can we come to the pay ranges for the increases that. And you envision that would be same ranges, and then skill of the hire determines the actual pay?
In the future, yes, I would, I would like a range rather than just a. One, twenty dollars set, set, set in and set away, and only so we can tap on that. If I have someone with a lot of experience and they're extremely knowledgeable, then obviously we'd want to co- compensate them for that. If they're already coming to the table with all the required certificates, you know, part three, part four, six, CBL. All of those above, you know, then obviously we want to. Put them on the higher end, if they're coming in with maybe six to ten years of experience from another job similar, you know, the municipality.
Mm-hmm.
Um, similar, then, yes, so in the future, I would like to move those to, to a scale or range, I think this is a good starting point for where we're at right.
So can we pass it? Because we don't have that. Currently in that, in the book, do, would we, would we pass? A regular wage increase and then back pay them, is any, are they both doing this job right now?
So, uh, what I would do is, is I would prepare the changes to the kind of the points that is, and then we would have both of those three readings of the wage ordinance. As well as the changes to the COBRA at this, I just all. First meeting, second meeting, third meeting, they would all happen with each other.
Yeah.
So then when we did, when you did, if you did make that motion to approve it, it would all be approved at the same time.
Okay.
Changes to the COBRA, changes to the personnel manual, as well as annual wage compensation ordinance. But hence why you haven't seen it, hence why you haven't seen that yet, because I'm not going to do all that work, that's.
Yeah, so, somebody that currently in that role, and they're planning on going to that role, that we shouldn't give them a raise to that role, or if they're in now.
So I can tell you that the individual that I would like to put in this role. Is going above and beyond their current position and performing, uh, performing those duties currently without, in my opinion, whatever position.
Oh, the two percent, two dollar increase that people were getting where you're at other, other places, their past or probation, probation periods, right? So. For this individual that you're thinking of, because it would be official. Then what's the probationary period that you're thinking for this individual?
Um, being that they are previous employee, employee, and they are.
It's a new role.
And, and they are performing those duties most of the duties currently, right, no, I mean, I didn't envision a probationary period for that.
Right.
That would be if we hired someone.
Right.
So if I hired someone that I had no experience with, no relationship with, no past knowledge of. Then we would talk, then that's where probationary period.
So does that need to be written in the manual as well?
Reashare period is.
Okay, um, just checking my math, so the, on either, well, on page two, where we have the comparable. Community adjustment to the average. That number. Listed as a dollar amount, let's just take public works foreman for example, you took the current wage. Um, the difference between the average, just the thirty three eleven, I think, for that role.
Twenty, twenty nine ninety two.
Right, so you did thirty three eleven minus twenty nine ninety two to come up with your CCAA of three nineteen. Is that right?
Now, the season, the comparable community average was off of the conversion, I think, yeah, to Nebraska base.
Yeah, I don't know, I just mean, so for this role, you're saying to get this foreman position to the average, we would need to increase that by three nineteen.
Yes.
So that is meaning if I took twenty nine ninety two plus three nineteen. I should be at the community average for that position, which is thirty three eleven, correct? To make sure I'm following.
Thirty three eleven, yes.
Okay.
And you'll see that on the silo sheet.
Yep.
Under public works.
That's right, so.
And thirty three.
Okay.
As the average, plus the COLA.
Right.
Is what I'm suggesting, yes. So you would take that, that, uh, thirty three, but plus.
Ninety cents.
And that gives you thirty four one, this.
I think. I would argue. That our goal in adding the community average would be to get. The take home pay, the final hour, we don't earn that outside.
I think that's what we've tried to do in the past, we obviously, we've been, I always do it in my last one. Um, but I think that, yes, on our package that we have beyond just. Um, we do try, or I think a good goal is to try to get it to the average, which would be. A compromise in between the two that we're presenting with anyway, which is the COLA, like, for this individual, we're talking, you know. Original proposal would be thirty four dollars to one cent, and, um, which would be more than the thirty three elevens, but COLA only is thirty point eight two. Which is, you know, below the average, so. I think. COLA and then up to average. You know, with our other compensation. You know, that's, I think, I think that's, that's an in-between point, and. I think it's, kind of six, it's a tour goal we're trying to get to.
So these numbers were from this year, so if you took the average, the thirty three eleven, and you gave that COLA. Uh, which is what you would need to do, because these, these are from this year, we have next year's numbers.
I know, in January, I know, this is what we typically.
So that must be thirty four ten, would then become the average for next year.
Yeah, it is possible, we're also trying to manage, not to send you out of this card and.
No, 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 yeah, I'm just trying to.
I'm trying.
No, I just, I didn't think.
Back, back, and again, this may be, the, when we get valuation, we may have to be real anyways. Ooh, no, can't do that.
But we also have a really strong, I'm actually, you know, there's other things we have to think about, you know, so yes, I understand, but. I understand what you're saying, and I appreciate you, like, you're staying, I appreciate you're writing the ways to give us. But I. Fiscally responsible, everybody will get a raise if we get everybody to average. Here in the city grant, and they still have their good benefits. Plus they get COLA, get COLA, and then up to average, um, I know some of them are already above average, but they would get COLA, that's what I see it.
Yes, and that's, with the original proposed, with the Meyer adjustments, you can see on the CCN or COLA, there are some that are just getting COLA. Those are already at the comparative community average.
Yeah.
But really, a little about this.
Right.
I think everyone should, I think everyone should either get, well, if your minimum wage, you, you obviously COLA. Everybody gets COLA. And then if you're not at the, this is how I see it, so it's just, if you're not at the mythic, the average, then the adjustment is up to average. COLA, minimum, minimum wage adjustment by law, COLA, everybody else, and then if you're not, and if you're at that point, you're still not at the, um. Average, then we adjust it up to average. That's, that's my thought, and that's what I would, I kind of will, you know.
So, and you're correct, most of the, what we're just giving, the comparable community average. Would be more than COLA only.
Mm-hmm.
Uh.
Right, but the way COLA works is, needs an adjustment, living costs, so that means if we're giving it, it needs to go to every employee. So what we're saying, I think, is.
And make the difference.
Yeah, I'm saying make the difference.
What we're saying is, it, it is, may, I, what I'm hearing you say is you're proposing page two, but the CCAA numbers. Would be different, because what we're trying to get to is the number on the far right equal the community average.
Yes. It's plus COLA.
What?
It's plus COLA that we've taken, basically.
So COLA is going to come in up front, and.
Yep.
And then you.
And then you're going to match.
And then you're going to have the average.
So that's what basically.
So the actual dollar amount of CCAA would be.
Basically the sideline. Yes, basically the sideline, getting to the average on the.
Yes, yes, okay, and obviously, we don't give somebody, we move it up to their wage plus four, on top of minimum wage adjustments.
Those are already, out of the average, they give the straight COLA.
Absolutely.
Let me write that, yeah.
Yes, please.
But that's my opinion, I mean, I, I mean, that's my.
Um, and then I don't know if we, I mean, obviously, we just have one, one position here that. It's, the position itself is changing, so I don't know if it makes sense to. Account for that now, um, or if there's something that should be revisited after the employee is in the role, or if you have any thoughts either way about it.
Um. So I, I do see the necessity of gifts, as we ask, there's anything to do more, to pay them, you know.
Yeah.
Um, I, but I also think that it is, it is a new role for that individual, and if they were to. Bag out of it, you know, then it would go back to the other person, you know what I mean? Um. We also have a, you know, mayor's merit of, of, you know, that can happen if somebody's doing well in their role. So. My thought process on that particular one, as we move that, would be to, um, put them. So we just do a cost of, if we do, if we do, uh, COLA plus up to average, you know, that puts them at. Um. Twenty six, twenty three. So we would give that then anyway, if they didn't take on the, the essential. Right, they just stay in their position and take an extra work, we give them twenty six, twenty three, that, I think, there.
Great.
So if we then add on, since what I'm thinking. Fifty nine cents on top of that. Okay, that puts them at twenty six eighty two, which is one dollar underneath the. Because it's a new role for them, I know that you know the person, it is a new role, and it's one dollar underneath, where then they could get the mayor's merit if they're doing very well.
Okay.
So my, my, my proposal is, yes, if they're moving in that role, pay them more than the average, um, because they are going to be in a new role, uh, and we're asking them to do more. And then as they excel in that role, they can make up that extra, um, extra dollars.
Save the day probationary period.
Okay.
So what you're saying is to. Do you, just to, just so you're correctly in my head and same.
Hmm.
So to do the, the, sorry, COLA front end. Difference to the average, you, that gets us to the twenty six sixty three, twenty six twenty three, yes, twenty six twenty three, so. And, and then, sixty day commission, you mean, then the dollar.
No, what I'm saying is, we're asking them to do that right now, so what we're saying is, is actually no, taking up to twenty six eighty two.
Okay.
Right now.
Right now.
Okay.
And that puts him one dollar under what is currently being asked for. And, but we have a mayor's merit that can increase by a dollar hours, as he sells in that role, that can jump up to that twenty seven eighty two. There's an opportunity to do, to excel the role and, and.
So you're wanting a slash in there, that she can.
She can always do that.
But. Well, we would still have to change the ordinance, so I'm.
Yeah.
So you would, you want the flash that you would then present it out if necessary, is that what?
Yeah, we don't have to go back and prove the ordinance, you just put it as a range.
Right, which is what we talked about anyway.
Right.
Not to muddy the waters, but we are.
Yeah.
We are now looking at community averages for roles that are changing.
Right.
So we're proposing to take our public works foreman up to the community average as a foreman, but we're reducing his responsibilities. And then we are asking for the public works assistant, one, to come up to. The average for a public works assistant and increasing his responsibilities. We want to muddy waters here, but it's just, so, back to like fiscally responsible, we, you are seeing fit to create a role that we don't have today, which is totally fine. We're still paying someone to do all of those responsibilities, and we're proposing increasing. That role up to. The average for someone who is doing all of those responsibilities.
Yes, and. Some of that is years of experience with the job, and. Yeah, I see what you're saying.
You know what I'm saying?
There's a, there's a.
From a city perspective, we are paying quite a bit more for the same work to be done by two people, ultimately. Because it doesn't, I, I no means proposing that we take money away from anybody, that doesn't make any sense, but I think when we are contemplating. Giving money to somebody else, we need to think about the fact that we are paying another position for that.
And, and. You know, part of my methodology there is, is, is take my neck out there and this fails, that's no well, but. And we still have a foreman position to come back to that can do all of the departments.
And that's kind of my thought process to add on this is. I, I'm, I think for this transition year, I'm fine with the original foreman getting up to average, because if it does not go well, it's all going to fall back on them. And now they're going to be doing the same job and paid less.
Right.
So, I think, I think, and then with this.
And they have been doing that, um, under average.
Right.
Right.
Um, so I think it's fair to get them up there, and the other thing is. With the range that we're going to propose, the range can be, if you do all the jobs, you're at this amount, and if you do less, then, or not all the jobs. Then, you know, and it goes to someone else, then there could be, that can increase us, yeah.
And then with. Uh, with that, and the. I, we're speaking, I can interrupt Sam, this loss, it went through, um.
So I think what's on the table is we keep.
If I remember it, I'll speak up.
Yeah, please do, that we keep the foreman. The comparable to the average for a foreman.
Thank you, there it is, thank you, so, there, comparable, so. What I would do next year then is, when we get the base survey, is do two, just be two for one ahead of the other. So you would see a comparable average for those and not for the foreman and the public.
Okay, so we may end up with one who's paid on the higher end or above average, based on the previous role.
Right.
And one that may need to be smoothed to an average, so potentially.
Why don't we do the survey, there's different level for. Different titles for different stuff, so, we, this one might be more of your, where it's street, your street superintendent, so that I can still. Keep a little bit more.
More apples to apples.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and a lot of that's off of jobs, the, they, they have scrapping everything as well, so that, that, you know, a public works assistant has a job description. I try and imagine seventy percent of where their, our gift for job description setting, they're calling that position, or what the ro- roles and responsibilities that position are, so yes, there would be. We would have to get. Just have, so.
And it's made of the hard, because we're in our small, we're. And it may be hard because we're, it is small, we're.
I mean, I think always, that's why we ask for the full picture, so I think it's difficult, um, but it, everything that we're talking about needs to be more in the direction of. A conservative start to the move. Rather than just jump to the community average for that role, even though I know you'd have experience with this individual. Once you define it, things are different sometimes, you know, so. I think. So it makes sense to me. So. Get everybody up to their community average if they're not there. And cola to those employees who are not receiving. One fifty, it's just.
Yeah, oh, oh. That, that's, that's, that's one range with. You know, whatever you wanna call it, or ratio, I mean.
It's paid up more, I just, I might not, basically say two. But if the range, then we could give it, basically say two in the range.
Well, yeah, and then, uh. I had a different, I mean.
Well, I was just saying the range would be just a dollar difference, but then the mayor could just stay.
Sure.
It's time for, and fine, we're gonna go to that range then, if you were gonna do it as a merits. Mayor's merit, that basically.
I mean, honestly, with that theory then, should. Should all of our positions have a range up to a dollar beyond where they're at, just so that, that.
That's the thing we went away from a couple of years ago.
No, I liked when we originally had that.
I mean, that was kind of our intention, is like, if certificates are obtained, if.
Yeah.
Go out there and better yourself, it prevents us from having to do departments every time somebody is excelling in their.
That needs to be spelled out then to probably the manual, that the top range is from, is from, is remote.
Yeah.
You know, that this is, this is what it is, possible.
Yes.
I have violent app, and every single, uh, every system.
And so call out the dollar for potentially up to a dollar for mayor, here's mayor's merit.
Yours, I like a much merit, I mean, yeah, you know.
Um.
I, I, I appreciate that. Uh, I'd have to go back and revisit, I'm not really sure how we got away from that, or why we got away from that, but.
I think everything's, I think everything got derailed last year because we're in a. Situation of didn't end up getting to the averages we wanted to in that first place.
Yes.
Um, the only positions we have not talked about are two, because they do not have. Cola or community average adjustments, but there is a dollar amount listed there.
About mayor. So those were prepped by you guys for increases.
Gotta do it through.
Okay. We still feel good about that.
Um, yeah, I think that's.
Actually, those both of those positions above average.
Yeah.
It goes with the election cycle.
That's what I, I'm like, I haven't talked about this number, we haven't seen this number.
Yes, you're not getting a cooler, a CCTAs, and that's why I put N A. All right.
N A, gotcha.
Same one, not, that's not, not, not alcohol, it's not. Um.
But these numbers are just repeated in the ordinance again when we start reading.
As well as like the enforcement officer is the only other one that's, so it's just, that's always been a dollar thing, that's.
Okay, so we actually. Do have to make a motion so that you can come back.
Um, you know, I can see.
Understood, I.
Guidance on, on actual guidance on what you guys wanted to see, or how prepare the ordinance with the guidance that was given, um. They pull up run in, get to the average, they ranges plus the dollars merit, I'll put it in the code. Right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Uh, there's, I'm gonna, you know.
Yeah.
So I just, that's the simple guidance, unless I heard something wrong, or repeated something wrong, please sum it down, who has a moving forward.
I think it's good, I think because there is. Because we have to go through a fair briefing in our next meeting, you know, this day on cycle, on time. How, since we have two members missing, and we don't wanna derail at the next meeting. Is it, is there anything that he can seek guidance on? Reading to the table. Discussion. All right.
Which green and silver units?
We have it for, I, the budget.
We can discuss what you deserve in the budget.
We're happy.
Okay. I mean. Since, I, what we think the budget itself, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Very good.
I appreciate your guidance, um, obviously, I'm gonna read it. This is just starting, trying to give you your own evaluation and moving forward. To continue with the plan, but I, this.
Agreed.
But appreciated that you have the force of to not only bring back that range, but as well as trying to maximize the benefits for the employees. Specifically take the pay check out, which is beautiful.
All right, um, action item E, action discussion on a letter of understanding of services with AMGL for an audit for twenty-three twenty-four, as reviewed.
You don't have to age out, you, you really did approve this at the last meeting.
Yeah, as revised.
So that's even more, go over the revisions that the auditor sent us.
After visiting with the library board, uh, president and director of local library, and stuff, and started talking about. We didn't know how, they had the. Library foundation portion budgeted in to the engagement letter and how it was.
Okay.
So, um, they did not, so they have left the testament to not exceed the twelve five, it was an original one that we.
Eight seven of your.
Yeah, it's.
So, and then they added and will not exceed twelve point of, um, give us five for, you know, which is.
Oh, oh, that's, I'm like, where my staples.
So again, no other changes other than the addition of the library foundation not to exceed twelve hundred dollars. She.
Okay, so that's just setting an inconvenience that we know was going to sure, and there's this.
Clarification.
So, and there's still, I mean. The library foundation decides at some point that they want to do it on their own or do it. All five were. Audit waiver, they choose to do that, they can, and, and then they just went through with it, but. By having it spelled out this way, at least we know what to budget for, for it at this point.
We have, we have authorized to decide on this, so do we have to authorize? Throw emporie to sign with this?
That has a, that's a, all right, shall we, mayor, please? All right, all moved to set action on a letter of understanding of services with the AMGL audit. Of fiscal year twenty. Twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, and by. Read tyranny motion, and S M seconded to accept the letter of understanding of services with AMGL, was revised for twenty-three and twenty-four. Need decision. I vote yes, Sam?
Yes.
You're in, yes. Yeah, that's curious. Everybody have an opportunity to review the bills and claims.
Right, I know, as it changed the bills and claims, I had some communications as well, there, um, there, and you guys have the. Apologies for not making the order to thank you cards, uh, for upfront, did everyone get a chance to sign those, I'll get Andrea and. Those are an appreciation of the Creighton County Community Foundation, their matching funds, brass community foundation, uh, youth engagement fans. They received fifteen thousand dollars. To entities, for, we spent just a little over seven thousand dollars on, uh, placing wood planks and. Seeing at the park, you know, and shell, um, and, and interact with graphic, which you can see on your. Only that construction, which is on the girls' plane.
Right, this is for the.
Right, right, this is for the painting, but next one will be on our, so the next bills and plates, she is going to also. Uh, they have hired them to do a painting called Creeds.
Bitches.
So if you take your pancakes over there, that youth group has been, are watching those at a furious face. They got as much done as they could before school started, so you guys will have a little bit. Plus. So that's, just wanted to give you sort of an explanation of updating that, we're very appreciative of that group, we're thinking of the part for their updates. They didn't have any remaining, remaining money left over, they had talked about maybe proficient lies on the. Pickleball courts.
It did, if they're not able to do that, I did have a conversation with a member of the community who recommended painting the flag. Which I think height-wise might pose an issue, but I had not even noticed that it needed painted until they mentioned it, but it does.
We have plans, we're gonna move. We're gonna place the American flag where the tree board flag is, and. Just like to note that we did receive fifteen hundred dollars from the Perkins County Community Foundation for the placement of the book, and for the, one of the. So, only one bench, broken, the only bench. So, here is one of those.
Uh, additional, I mean, for that bench, and we're gonna wait until the next fiscal year, right? The benches will be painted those soon.
Uh, yes, and I believe they pick when.
All of them.
Here, here, hold on, I'm trying to do the, she's gonna do a protective epoxy coating.
Please.
Hopefully it lasts a little while, that's about a two week process, they're, they're, they're in. Um, it takes a little while to completely that, no.
So it then might have correct search, just play the role.
This was an addition to her, her. We're thankful we have people in the community who know how to do that, so.
Sure.
Probably can support a local family.
All right, action on bills and claims. Good, thank you.
Uh, we need to actually move on, those claims to amount of two hundred and twenty-one thousand nine hundred and six dollars in communities.
Okay. Sam motion and tyranny seconded that paid the bills and claims, and you want two hundred and twenty-one dollars, two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Two hundred and twenty-one thousand nine hundred and six dollars and twenty-nine. Uh, any question? How do you vote it?
Yes.
Here, yes. I vote here, motion carries. The meeting is adjourned, thank goodness for us all, at eight oh thirty-five.